Undercover Individual Delivery and Justice for All.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins, Clem Moszewski, Rich Patterson, Mike Ristoldi, Jim Galantino, Margaret Huber-Malti, Craig Thomasano, Despena Hess, Randy Pelosi, Joe D. Geraldo, Ron Tuko, Michael Rich.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press, and a copy of the same has been posted on a bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive Board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the Board Administrator to sign the two information sheets. At this time, we're going to swear in, re-swear in a member.
Okay, Mr. D. Geraldo, can you do it from there, Joanna?
Dinner.
Just stand up, raise your right hand, repeat after me. You can handle it. I, Joseph D. Geral-
You can't.
Do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey-
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States-
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state-
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people-
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm-
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will impartially and justly perform-
I will impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member-
All the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member.
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Come sign the paper.
Do you have to sign this?
Remy Grossman's here. Like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of March 22, 2018.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions. Number 16, 2018, Consistency Report on Ordinance Number 05-2018, Amending and Supplementing Chapter 175, Section 29(c), Number 17, 2018, North Peak Holdings LLC; Number 18, 2018, Temple Charat Hayam; Number 19, 2018, Joseph F. Calcare III; 20, 2018, Bendill Development, Inc., 21, 2018, Barbary Coast LLC; and 22, 2018, Elizabeth Abbott and Andrew Ferriassi. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Jim? Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before you get to the applications, we do have to add, something came up last minute this afternoon around roughly 3:00. So I, we have to add a resolution to go into executive session, which we'll do after the applications. If the, if it passes, has to do with pending litigation. Since it's a late add, I have to read the resolution, and then we'll, we'll vote on it. I call it City of Margate Planning Board Resolution Number 23-2018, Resolution Providing for an Executive Session Not Open to the Public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:412, Regarding Pending Litigation and Attorney-client Privileged Matters, Whereas the City of Margate Planning Board is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:46, and Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:412, Provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, and Whereas it is necessary for the City of Margate Planning Board to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters relating to items authorized by NJSA 10:412(b), specifically with regard to pending litigation entitled Edward Blumenthal versus the City of Margate Planning Board and Adventure Golf South LP, pending Atlanta County Superior Court, Document Number ATL-609-18, and Attorney-client Privileged Matters, and Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Margate Planning Board that the Board move in the executive session closed to the public. It is further resolved that any vote on the matter will be held in public session. It is further resolved that the deliberations conducted in, in closed session may be released when a decision with respect to the matter has been made, and all rights to litigate or appeal are exhausted, provided that material entitled to court protection or subject to attorney-client privilege shall not be disclosed. And that is the resolution. We need a motion.
And when do we hear it?
After the meeting?
It'll be during the meeting, but we'll do the applications, and then we'll-
After the applications.
Yes.
Okay. So I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Jim? Remy? Can she second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passes. First case is number seven on the agenda, the 2012 Topaz Family Trust, 114 South Quincy Avenue, Block 18, Lot 17, in the S-40 district, to grant C. variances for coverage, rear yard, combined side yard, and possibly others. Taxes and order are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. This is the second case on our agenda. We're hearing it first. Please be sworn in, Mr. McLarnin.
Mr. McLarnin, do you swear affirm testimony about the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. Pretty basic application. One-day beach block for 114 South Quincy Avenue, Block 18, Lot 17. I'll just go over the variances requested. Variance is required. One is combined side yard setback, whereas a minimum of 22 feet combined side yard setbacks are required, and 18.5 feet exists, and 15.1 feet is proposed. The second one is a rear yard setback for the deck, whereas a minimum of 16 feet rear yard deck setback is required, and 15.1 feet exists, and 15.1 feet is proposed. It's an expansion of a non-comforming condition. The third variance is for building coverage, whereas 31% maximum building coverage is required. 36% exists, and 37% is proposed.
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, yes. Fat fingers. The final variance is a third-floor deck, whereas third-floor decks are not permitted unless it's a beachfront or waterfront house, and one is proposed. There is a lot between subject property and a bulkhead, so therefore it's not a beachfront. Even if the lot's not big enough for a house, it's not considered a beachfront? There's another property in between. Okay. The, my comments are as follows. A combined side yard setbacks are not meeting the required minimum, and are being reduced from an already non-compliant setback. This requires a variance. Going back to the third-floor deck, it is the intent of the master plan to allow third-floor decks within the beach block, so hopefully when we get that passed, this will be, this variance would go away at that point in time. I really have no other comments on this application. I leave it up to the testimony of the applicant.
Go ahead. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Cullen. I'm the attorney for the applicant, the 2012 Topaz Family Trust. Together with me today, I have Peter Weiss, the architect, a professional to testify on behalf of the application. I also have Mark Topaz and Jackie Topaz, the grantors of the trust, and the owners of the property, if there is any questions on that. As you stated before, the application concerns a three-story, single-family residence located at 114 South Quincy Avenue in the S-40 district. It is the most southerly home on South Quincy Avenue. It is adjacent to a vacant lot, as stated, which is the lot owned by the city between their property and the beach. As everyone's aware, tall dunes have been installed on the beach in front of the property, blocking the views of the beach and the ocean. That was once enjoyed from the ground floor and first floor of the residence. As will be explained by Peter Weiss, the applicant's architect, the applicant proposes to, one, add an elevator on the south side of the building, which would add a mere 25 square feet to the footprint of the building, or 1% of the additional building coverage; and, two, to expand existing small second and third-floor decks that are facing the beach and ocean. In addition, the existing deck on the first floor will be reduced, and landscaping will be, will be added, as well as new siding and a new roof that's proposed. I'm going to now ask Peter to join me, and he can, we can go through the variances that are requested.
And Mr. Weiss, just your name and address for the record, and I'll swear in.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
Do you swear affirm testimony about the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
Mr. Weiss, you're a licensed architect, correct?
Yes.
There's two mites.
I got mine, okay.
You're a licensed architect, correct?
Yeah.
And you've appeared before this board and testified and qualified as an expert, correct?
Yes.
Could I?
Yes, we accept his credentials.
Great, thank you. Peter, you're familiar with the subject property, the surrounding site, and the application before the board?
Yes.
Okay. Could you first describe the existing site, and if you refer to photos, and if you have those marked? They marked A?
No.
Okay. Huh? Sure. Can we mark those A1, and the photos A1, and the plan A2?
Photos A1, and the plan is A2. Got it.
Thanks.
Okay, so the existing lot is occupied by a three-story house. The existing house is pushed towards the north side of the lot, which means we have very tight setbacks on this side, basically three feet, which then because of the combined side yard setback means we'd need 19 feet on the south side, this side. There's some practical problems there, trying to fit what we want to do in there, just because of the building. The house right now is set up as a, you know, typical house, with the living space on the ground floor. It's pretty close to grade, so, you know, it's only a couple feet above grade, so it's lower than most houses even built back then, and it's certainly much lower than houses built today. Upstairs are currently, there's one bedroom on the first floor, and there's a total of six upstairs, so currently there's seven bedrooms in the house. Part of this application will include eliminating one of the bedrooms to create a den on the second floor, which will effectively reduce the parking requirement. So, in the rear of the site, there's a large deck in this corner behind the driveway, which was previously used for a lot of outdoor activities. With the installation of the dunes, you see that being used a lot less, so we want to effectively take the use that was down here and move it upstairs. So what we're going to do is reduce the side of the deck basically in half, which increases a lot of the landscape coverage. And then we would like to expand the second-floor deck and leave enough room to have a dining area up there. So that's the main motivation for expanding the second-floor deck. The elevator-
Will that be out as far as the first-floor deck?
Well, the first-floor deck right now is out to here.
The new first-floor deck?
Yeah, there is, yes.
They'll be straight up from there?
Yes. Yes. The elevator will fit right in the corner of the L here, the L shape of the building, so it's kind of tucked away, you never see it through the street. It's 25 square feet, which in reality is only about half a percent increase in building coverage, which to me is de minimis. We need a rear yard setback variance because a 15-foot line-in sheer where 16 is required to the, to the second-floor deck. That's basically aesthetic because if I, you know, cut it back another foot or so, you know, it starts to conflict with the existing building with regard to windows and things like that. So it just made more sense to just make it a little bit bigger, so it lined up with the break in the building here on the second floor. As you all know, this lot to the south is vacant. It's owned by the city. As far as I can see, it's not going to be built on any time in the foreseeable future, so effectively, you know, the setback to the bulkhead is, between the lot and the deck, is going to be 52 feet or better. That effectively becomes our side yard setback.
Do you know how wide that lot is, on the city, the city's lot?
Well, the lot extends way out on the beach.
Do you know how wide it is to the bulkhead?
Forty-one feet.
Well, it varies a little bit, but it's basically 40 to 41, yeah.
Got it.
But, you know, it's well over 100 feet onto the beach, I believe. Oh, one other little point. There's a bunch of planter walls on the front that are deteriorated and kind of falling apart, so we're going to remove all those and just have landscaping out there. So it effectively increases the landscape coverage also. So, you know, all told, it's a dramatic increase in landscape coverage, because we're adding basically 50% to what was there before. With regard to the second-floor deck and the setbacks, because this lot is vacant, and probably will be forever, you know, there's no impact on it because there's nobody there. Same goes with the third-floor deck. The prime motivation for this was to cover this little portion of the second-floor deck, just have a little bit of cover. So this extension is a little less than six feet, so rather than try to put a little piece of roof out here, we thought it made more sense to just extend the existing deck out, you know, basically this far. There again, since there's nobody here, I don't see any impact on that lot.
Is there any setback requirement or deficiency towards Rumson Avenue? It's only towards the bulkhead?
Oh, Rumson?
Yeah.
Well, I said, yeah, we're basically 11 inches.
Got it. Okay.
Right. That's one of the variances.
Peter, the side yard, combined side yard setback variance. So I see this number here, 16 feet, 10 and a half inches to the, I guess that's the deck, right? Is that a living area there where we're bums out at Quincy Avenue? See like that curved area there?
Here?
Yeah.
Yes.
So what I'm trying to say is that, what is that? Is that living space on the first floor?
Yeah, that's the dining room, yes.
Huh?
That's the dining room, yes.
Okay, all right. So otherwise, if that was set back, there pretty much, there wouldn't be a side yard, combined side yard setback, correct? Am I right?
For this? For what? I'm not sure where you asked.
Okay, so the combined yard setback variance. So if I put, if I add, like, let's say 16, 10, 17 feet, and then four feet, that's like, like, almost 21 feet. So why is there a, where are we putting up at the?
It's for the other portion of the deck back here.
15 foot from the rear.
So the combined yard setback is only 15 feet? You know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Correct, yes.
Huh?
Yes. Between the three foot on this side and the 12 feet here, yes.
Okay. All right, I get it.
You're talking about the deck, not the house, right?
Well, it's house on this side and deck on this side.
Is the combined yard setback related to the decks or to the actual house?
Well, what's driving the variance is the location of the deficiency in the side yard setback for the existing house. That's what's causing the problem.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I got.
Okay. Now, you mentioned the elevator being 25 square feet, or 1% additional coverage. Can you explain the need for the elevator?
Primarily, it's for the Topaz's parents or alder, and have trouble getting up and downstairs. Obviously, it's going to be more accessible to the second floor with the elevator.
And that's only an interior accessway?
Correct again, yes. Doesn't.
Said a yes or a no?
Does not go to the third floor.
You also talked about, I guess, landscaping. Is there also going to be siding proposed?
Well, as you've seen, if you've been by the property, they've already started replacing the siding, so all the siding is being replaced with fiber cement siding. So, I mean, we're, you know, upgrading the whole exterior of the house at this point.
Has anybody approached the city on trying to buy the property?
Mark, you can answer if you want to.
Are you going to need to be sworn in?
Buy the property, the city own property, yeah?
State your name and address.
Mark Topaz. We have talked to the-
I got to swear in. Do you swear affirm the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And what was your address?
114 South Quincy. So we've, we've had conversations with the city for a pretty long period of time, but we've talked to Scott Abbott, the city solicitor, and Rich Deeny, John Amadeo, but as of right now, there's, you know, there's no resolution. The last thing, you know, the last thing that I heard, and I'm not sure if I have all the information, was that they were going to send a letter because it has to be offered to adjacent holders, but then I, you know, that letter hasn't been sent.
Is, will a house fit on that lot by itself?
The, our plan was not to, you know, extend our house, and, yeah.
Would a house fit on that? Could you sell it and have a house put there? Does it?
Oh, no, no. From, and I'm not an expert in zoning, but from what I understand, there's like a 25-foot DP setback.
Right.
You know, so it, you know, it would be impossible to build a house on, you know, that lot's only 40, you know, approximately 40 feet. Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, I have another question. That 40 feet plus your, how wide's your lot?
Ours is 60 by 80.
So that's 100 feet. What's the requirement for two houses there?
50 feet is the minimum.
So you could combine the lots, you could put two houses there, right?
But they, in my discussions, they don't want us to do that, and they would want us to agree not to do that, and we don't want to do that.
Okay.
So, you know.
I just want to know what's possible there, that's all. Thank you.
Could you turn on your speaker, please?
You hold that down. On your site plan, you show a framed deck off the living rooms. Is that new or just?
Well, that was going to be proposed, yeah. That's, what's there now, I think, is pavers or concrete or something, but, you know.
The deck?
Uh, now.
The deck on the south side?
No, 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 not the deck. There's a walkway on the north side. It's, can you move it? Yeah, it's pavers on the, on the north side. Is that what you told me?
The wood deck. It says framed deck on your site plan.
Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong side.
Is that new or existing?
Well, if there's a deck there now, we're just going to reduce the size of it, so.
It's going to reduce the size.
It needs to be reducing it from, see the dotted line around? It needs to be reducing it from the dotted line back to that.
Yes.
I don't see any dotted line. Oh, that existed dotted line is, is what it is now, and you're cutting it back to here?
Right.
Okay. So that deck is going to be here?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, in your professional opinion, will the purposes of the Municipal Land Use Act be advanced by this deviation or departure from the zoning ordinance or the requirements in this application?
Yes.
Can the variances be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes, I believe they can.
Or minimal, if any, right?
Right.
Will the benefits of the variances outweigh any detriment?
Yes, I believe so.
And will the granting of the variance not substantially impair the intent of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance? Can you tell me the purposes of the zoning that have, that are advanced by this application?
It's an improvement to the property. It's an upgrade. There's, there's no impact on, on the neighbors. So I think it's a better alternative than, say, knocking it down and building something new there, which could be substantially-
Will it result in a more desirable visual, visual environment?
Yes.
And how about, will it provide adequate light, air, open space for the, for the residents?
Yes.
Do you have any further questions?
Board have anything? If you're done, I'll open it to the public.
Thank you.
Anyone here from the public who would like to comment? Public portion is closed. Any further comments or discussion from the board? Leo, would you?
Sure. We need a motion for C. variance relief to permit a combined yard setback of 15.1 feet, where 22 feet's required, a rear yard setback to the deck of 15.1 feet, where 16 feet is required, a building coverage variance of 37%, where 31% is the permitted maximum, and a variance to permit a third-floor deck, where third-floor decks are currently not permitted, and the conditions would be, all conditions contained in Mr. McLarnin's report of April 26, 2018.
I'll make a motion.
Jim? Mike?
Clem Moszewski?
In another location, I would be opposed to the extensive amount of decks. I really don't think anybody needs that much deck. And in another location, I don't think either the negative or the positive criteria would be met. But here, with everything being on the ocean side, the impact on any adjacent properties is almost nonexistent. So I see no reason on that basis to oppose it, so I'll vote in favor of the application.
Rich Patterson?
I also vote in favor. I don't see any detriment here. I think it, it furthers the intent of the master plan. It's an improvement in the visual appearance, and it's not interfering with anyone else's light and air, and as Clem said, there's nothing on the ocean side of this house that it could interfere with, so, again, I approve.
Mike Ristoldi?
As the other two members mentioned, it's, I don't see any impact on any neighbors, anybody. What they're doing will improve the neighborhood, actually. I vote yes on the application.
Jim Galantino?
I can see the hardship with the third-floor deck because of the ocean view is blocked by the new manufactured hill. It's not called a dune. It's just a hill with a bunch of grass on it. And for that reason alone, I can see the, see the third-floor deck being approved. And for the side yard setback, I can see the house as existing, and I don't see, I see the- and I don't see, I see the hardship or not. I approve.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I agree with the other board members. I see no negative impact. Certainly, the benefits outweigh the detriments, and I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Pomisano?
Yes, so I agree with the other board members also. Third-floor decks are fine. They lost the views from the dunes somewhat on your first-floor deck, and I see no detriment to any neighbors being an oceanfront property like that. So, I'd vote in favor.
Michael Richmond?
I agree with the other board members. I really don't see any detriment to the neighborhood. None of the neighbors came out and spoke against it, so I'm going to vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing. Mr. Cullen, will you please come up?
Thank you.
Are the parties here for the Grimaldi case?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Next case is Gene Grimaldi, 14 North Gladstone Avenue, block 208, lot 29, in the S-25 district to grant a C variances for side yard deck height, side yard and combined side yard and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you for your chairman, board members. In regard to the application of Mr. Grimaldi at 14 North Gladstone Avenue, we've identified, Mr. Grimaldi and I have had deep discussions about the side yard deck and porch. Basically, there's three variances that are required. It's a minimum side yard for the deck where eight feet is required, 3.7, three feet is existing, and four feet is proposed. The other variance is a minimum side yard setback for the roof of a partial cover for the deck where eight feet is required, five feet is proposed, and the combined side yard setback again because the house is pushed to the one side of the property. 18.5 feet is required. Existing is 11.63 feet. Proposed is 11.93 feet. So, there's a slight improvement. Landscape coverage actually improves from the required. He previously removed some concrete to be in compliance, so I leave it up to the applicant to discuss his project.
Okay. Gene Grimaldi, 14 North Gladstone, Margate.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
This is, I bought the house four years ago, and one of the first things I did was submit for a permit for a deck, which was approved by the zoning officer, and the deck that's there currently has been there for four years now, is approximately 15 inches off the grade, basically sits on the grade, about two inches below the joists where the dirt is. So, I've had that deck now. It's 14 by 24 for four years, and that's where we have our table. We sit outside and enjoy the outdoor space. From, approximately from the fence line, my property line, to my house is 18 feet currently, open air. From my adjacent neighbor, their house is 24 feet from the property line starting, so we have a combined about 42 feet between our houses. I wouldn't be here at first if my neighbors, who are the most important part of this process, had any objection whatsoever about me putting a roof on top of the deck that's been there already. I do want to expand the existing deck by six feet, mainly because of the way the structure is. I wanted to slide it to the right of my house a little bit, so I used six feet so I could put the deck on about, I mean, the covered area on about half the deck and leave the other half open to, you know, open air. That pretty much is the extent of it. Basically, it's for, I'm adding two columns on top of my deck right now and putting in, putting a covered porch so I could sit out when it rains. I'm planning to spend more time here at the shore, and I have nowhere to go when it's raining or cooking and things like that. So, that's mainly the reason. I could, I don't have to read you the letter, but my neighbor was all in favor for it, and that's pretty much it.
Any questions? Any questions to the board? Clem?
Are you going to lose one window inside?
I am. It's in the stairwell going up to the second floor.
And the new roof meets all the pitch requirements?
It does.
I remember when you put that door in.
That was the first thing I did.
One of my comments I made was to possibly add, look at adding some more shrubs in the front to be more in compliance.
Was this the one that didn't have trees in the front?
Yes.
Would you agree to meet our standard code of putting two trees in the front of your property and-
Sure.
On the governor strip?
Is there a list of, that you can choose for, or is it standard?
There's a list in the ordinance. You can give me-
You can go to Roger's office, and he can show you what's, works there.
I forget which one my wife wants, so that's why I have to ask.
That's important.
Roger, I do have one comment on, on your list that you sent out today. It was partly, but it is my fault. On the architectural drawings, I had the existing deck at four feet. Then you requested I get a property survey. It's actually, you have it on your existing at 3.73, and you proposed as a four feet. Obviously, if I want to add the six feet to my deck, I would, the one, I don't want to just move the deck in four inches, so I would like to, if you could just change that forefoot to, to match your existing of 3.73.
Okay. Besides the street trees, you would meet all the other shrubbery requirements. They're not owners.
We actually have shrub, we did shrubbery last year, so we do have shrubberies in our front. We have along the fence and along our sides now, currently, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Does there anyone here from, oh, I'm sorry.
Make any concession that it never be, that it never closed in?
Well, it couldn't be closed in without a variance, could it?
Right. We need a variance to close that room in, correct? It's almost like the property.
Yes, yes. He would be expanding a non-conforming setback.
Yes, he couldn't close it in.
Right, you can, you can-
So, doesn't the idea-
I have no problem with that. There is no intent, so I agree.
Doesn't matter. If you tried to do it, you'd have to come back before the board. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment? Public portion's closed.
And Mr. Grimaldi, you're okay with everything in Mr. McLaren's report?
I am.
And Roger, did I understand his comment correctly, that the setbacks changing to 3.73 feet?
There is a difference between the survey and his plan, so in order to be consistent, his existing set, side yard setback is 3.73. It's going to stay at 3.73.
Okay. And does that change the combined number?
No, no. Keep that the same, but the minimum side yard roof goes from five feet to 4.73 feet then, too.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we need a motion for C variances relief for a side yard setback of, side yard setback to the decks of 3.73 feet where eight feet's required, side yard setback to the, to the, to the roof over the deck or the deck roof of 4.73 feet where eight feet's required, and a combined side yard setback of 11.93 feet where 18.5 feet is required. The conditions would be those set forth, that'll, and plant or plant, I guess is the right word, two, two street trees in his governor's strip per the, the Margate City Land Use Code and all other conditions set forth in Mr. McLaren's report of April 26.
And bring the shrubbery up to the Margate code.
And bring the shrubbery up to the Margate code.
I'll make a motion.
It may already be there.
I think it is.
All right, Clem. Clem second? Oh, Mike. Pass tonight.
So, who made the motion and who seconded?
Me, Mike.
Okay.
Clem Waslaski?
This is going to be a rather nice addition to this house. I think it's going to, not only enhance this property, but I think the neighbor to the rear and the neighbor to the ocean side are both going to benefit from it. It'll help define a space that's a little unusual in its appearance. And I don't think it's going to have any negative effect on them as far as light viewing ventilation. It's essentially open except for the small mass of the roof, so I vote in favor of the application.
Rich Patterson?
I approve this application. There's such a substantial distance between the two houses. I see an improvement to the property. I see improvement with the vegetative aspect of the property, and I see no negative aspects.
Mike Chrisdaldi?
As the other board members mentioned, I see no negative effect at all on this thing. I think it's a really good addition to the house and to the neighborhood, just for its look it'll bring. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
Are you starting this summer?
Can I come in tomorrow?
Sure.
Yes, I agree with the board. I approve.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I agree with the other board members as well. It really looks nice. Nice improvement to the neighborhood and to the house. Vote in favor.
Craig Pomisano?
Yeah, I also agree. There's plenty of room between houses and the neighbors, and it's a nice upgrade.
Mike Richmond?
I agree with all the other board members. I think it'll actually be an improvement to their neighborhood with the additional landscaping, so I approve it.
Application passes seven to nothing. Mr. Grimaldi, please come up.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. The next case, we're back to number six on the agenda. Stacy Kopinger, 9709 Vettner Avenue, block 231, lots 14, in the C2 district to grant D variances for a use and C variances for side yards, combined side yard, lot area and lot width, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, board chairman, board members. My report was originally dated March 21st. Again, we, in regard to Stacy Kopinger at 9709 Vettner Avenue, which is in the C2 zone, which has to follow the MF criteria for residential and the S-25 as well. They're in a FEMA elevation nine zone, so their first-floor elevation has to be 13. Again, they need a C variance and a D variance.
Jim have to recuse himself?
Yes.
Jim, you have to recuse yourself.
This is a D variance, Mr. Gallantino, or-
Right in the middle of your saying.
And Tom's not here, so we're good there.
I believe they have architetchers that they're, to support the project. Okay, let me continue. The variances identified are as follows. Use variance, whereas a property is within the C2 zone permitting residential use on upper stories but not on the ground floor. Residential ground floor is prohibited. No commercial use is being proposed. Currently, it's an existing single-family house, so the use is not changing from what it is today. Second variance is side yard for the building on the right side, whereas the minimum setback for the S-25 residential zone is five feet, and the proposed minimum setback is 3.5 feet, which is Schedule B1. Third one identified as a side yard for the building on the left side, same criteria, five feet, and they're asking for 3.5 feet. Combined side yard setbacks on both sides don't comply. Then the combined side yards don't comply. 10 feet's required, and they're asking for seven feet. Side yard setback for the front deck on the right side, whereas the minimum setback is same for the side yard for the building. They need five feet. They're requesting 3.5 feet. Same thing for the left side, five versus 3.5 feet. And the side yard setback for the rear deck on the right side only, they need five feet, and 3.5 feet is requested. So, the comments are as follows. A residential use has been in existence since 1957. A certificate of nonconformity has never been issued. The applicant proposes to construct a flood-compliant residential structure with garage and storage plus entryway on the ground floor. The site is located within the C2 commercial zone, which prohibits ground floor level residential use only. The areas adjacent to the MF zoning district with the proposed use, the proposed use mostly resembles an S-25 use. That's according to Section 175, Attachment 4, colon 1. Section B1 indicates that MF zone shall use the adjacent chart for single-family use, and in turn, single-family zoning for bulk requirements. Existing lot area is 2375, and no adjacent vacant land is available to purchase to enlarge a lot. It's an existing nonconforming situation, and it is a built-up lot because there is an existing structure on the lot today. The existing lot width is 25 feet wide, and no adjacent land is available to purchase to enlarge a lot width. Again, this is an existing nonconforming situation. The front yard setback for both porch and deck in building comply with the prevailing setbacks for a minimum of five feet. The minimum side yard setback for residential use for the existing lot width is five feet. 3.5 feet is a proposed setback for both sides to the building. Again, the minimum side yard setback for residential use for the existing lot width is five feet. 3.5 feet is proposed setback for both sides of the front decks and to the right side for the rear deck. The minimum combined side yard setback for residential use for the existing lot width is 37 percent of the width, which is 9.25 feet, since both minimum are five feet. 10 feet is required, seven feet is proposed. A planting strip is not, across item number nine. Comment number 10 is two street trees are proposed. Comment number 11, there are not any easements shown on the property, not that that impacts it. And item number 12, the property fronts along Vettner Avenue, which is a county road, and a county road opening permit and a highway access permit will be required because no driveway exists today. So, they have to provide substantial testimony for the D variance, and again, the fact that the application is, or the existing use is a single-family use, and they want to continue that use, that should speak in their behavior and in their behalf. That concludes my report at this time.
I want to address Mr. Waslaski's concern. I must have overlooked it, or I'm missing it. There's no elevations here. I see no plans for the building.
The, the plans for the building are being presented as part of the-
Well, this, this case already started, but if, if I had known that before, you would not have been heard tonight. We've gone over this with attorneys before and John before. We need to see the plans before you come before the board. I'm not stopping it now, but if it, if I had known before the meeting, you would not have been heard tonight.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my name is Michael Ray for the record, with offices in Lewin, New Jersey, here on behalf of the applicant this evening. As Mr. McLaren has said, this application relates to the subject property at 9709 Vettner Avenue, block 231, lot 14, and it is Zone C2. Also here to testify this evening is Mr. Barnhart from Arthur Poncio's office and Scott Furlough. Mr. Furlough, Farlowe is the brother of the applicant, and he is the point man on what's going on before here, before us this evening. Procedurally, as you have stated, Mr. Chairman, the notice requirements, we believe, have been met. Taxes have been paid. Proof of those notices have also been provided to that as, as with payment of the fees and payment of the escrows. The applicant is before the board this evening respectfully requesting to, as part of the plan, to demolish the existing structure, which has been there since 1957. The purpose of doing that is just to upgrade amenities, to make it nicer, and improve that lot. It is for the use of the owners, Ms. Kopinger's family, Mr. Farlowe's family, has a vacation home, and they wish to continue to do that. They've owned it for three or four years, and that's what they've been doing through this time period. The variances that are being requested are D variance or Use variance, and the purpose of that is because the property, although currently used as a residence on the first floor and, second floor, two, or is it the first floor, on the first floor, but because the property is being totally demolished, and because there was never a non, a certificate of nonconformity issued for the property, we're before the board respectfully requesting a Use variance to construct this home. This home will be constructed elevated, as the plans will show, elevated for parking underneath. There will be nothing protruding from the floor plan by way of the design, no balconies out, no porches out, other than the footprint that is provided on the engineering plan. Also requesting respectfully C variances for the property that are non, existing noncon- Also requesting respectfully C variances for the property that are non, existing nonconformities relating to lot area and lot width. We are also requesting C variances for the side yard setbacks being 3.5 feet respectively on each side, and in the combined, as the engineer had said. With that objection, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Mr. Barnhart up to talk a little bit about the plans and answer any questions that the board members may have.
Just your name and address, Mr. Barnhart, for the record. I'll swear again.
Microphone?
John Barnhart, office address 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City.
And you swear affirmance testimony about the give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to qualify Mr. Barnhart? Thank you. Mr. Barnhart, you're familiar with the plans that have been submitted in support of the application?
Yes.
And your office is the office that had prepared those plans, is that correct?
That's correct.
You had a chance to review those plans before you came here this evening and prepared to testify, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind, if you'd like, outline the plans generally to the board, and certainly we'll discuss other issues as they arise.
Sure. So briefly, I guess we'll call this Exhibit A1. It's an aerial photograph of the site. The property is situated right between Monroe Avenue and Coolidge Avenue, right on Vettner Avenue, known as 9709. It's a 25-foot-wide swath of land that is kind of in the center of the block, and it's bordered by, or say flanked on either side by multifamily residential development on the corner of Coolidge and Vettner, and then you have the Horizon Eye Care Building adjacent to the property on Monmouth Avenue. It is an existing undersized lot of record. The lot itself, and I'll go to what I'll call Exhibit A2 now, the lot itself is 25 feet wide, it is 95 feet deep, and it does have a one-story, single-family home on it right now. There are a number of existing nonconformities with that existing home. The side yard setbacks are 2.95 feet and three feet. The front yard setback is six feet. And obviously, there is residential on the ground floor in this district, so it's an existing nonconforming use as well. This is a classic case, in our opinion, of an existing undersized lot of record, meeting the requirements of a hardship scenario. If you looked at the aerial photograph, for a moment, there's, based on the way this area's been developed, there's really no viable alternative other than allowing to redevelop the property for a home as they propose it, given the fact that there's no availability to purchase additional land. They kind of have what they have, and they're just trying to redevelop it and get rid of the existing, I'll say, blighted condition building that's on the site, and then also improve upon the site with regard to setbacks and the other bulk and area requirements. So what do they propose? They propose to build a two-story, single-family house over ground floor parking, storage, and then ground floor access to the building. This building will comply in all regards, with regard to setback in the front, setback in the rear, height, coverage, all of those elements. The only deviation that they're asking for with regard to the bulk standards is side yard setback. And again, I think with a lot in this, of this size, being 25 feet wide, it's clearly a hardship scenario where we have an exceptionally narrow piece of property, and in order to develop it in a viable fashion, the deviation for those side yard setbacks is necessary. What we do propose to do is, obviously, we're going to comply in the front yard, and we are, so we're greatly improving upon the setback with regard to what's there now with the front yard. And we are doing our best to increase the side yard setbacks on both sides, six inches on one side, a little bit greater than six inches on the other side, which I recognize is not a lot, but we have a 25-foot-wide lot. So if you look at, if you look at us from a compliance standpoint, if you were to try to comply, it's real, you can't build, yeah, you can't build a building on this lot. So the zoning ordinance, if you apply it here, puts the lot in utility with regard to its redevelopment. Because there's Use variance, I do have to talk briefly about special reasons and positive and negative criteria. I think this is a case where this application promotes the general welfare. I think the site is particularly suited for the use because the use exists already, and we are just improving, improving upon it. And I think that the second purpose of zoning this advance of the application is a more desirable visual environment because we are getting rid of that blighted building and building a new, single-family home on the lot. We were provided with plans in order to draw our site plan. I did bring copies of the floor plans and elevations of the building. The building will have two levels of decks. You can see a single-car garage door and a main door access at the ground, so you'll go in the, in the building and then up into the unit, into the house, and there'll be decks stacked on both levels, which you can see.
I'll call your elevations A4, and that one was A3, which is your plan, your site plan.
Correct. Yep. You can see the decks, again, the decks will also comply. With regard to the negative criteria, is there a substantial detriment to the zone planner zoning ordinance? We are immediately adjacent to a residential zone, being a multifamily zone. We've got multifamily, or we've got residential immediately next to us. As you know, I believe residential is actually permitted on this lot on the upper floors. We just can't have residential on the lower floor. So the residential is contemplated on this piece of property, residential exists on this piece of property, so we believe there is no substantial detriment to the zone planner's zoning ordinance. With regard to any detriment to the public good, my opinion is, as planners, this is a benefit. You have a building that is in really, really poor condition, and they are proposing to demolish that building and meet all of the requirements of FEMA, meet all the current building code requirements, and build a new, single-family home on the lot. So I think that the positive and the negative criteria are established for Use variance, and I think that you could discuss the C2 type of variance for, for the setbacks, but frankly, I don't think it's necessary in this case. The unique narrowness of this lot clearly justifies the side yard setbacks, both individually and as a combined yard, with regard to a hardship type of variance request. Obviously, I can answer any questions. I think that's all the...
So you're saying this improves the visual aspect to the neighborhood?
From what is just today, yes.
Yes. And do you have a rendering of the front of the property?
A rendering, no. I mean, they provided us with the elevations of the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Could you possibly bring that closer?
Sure. Ask it to you. Yep.
John, how many bedrooms in the new home?
Get that back from my... I believe it's three bedroom, yes.
How many are in the little tiny house, one-story house you have now?
Two.
Two bedrooms now, and you're going to put three bedrooms in?
Yes.
Roger, a three-bedroom house requires, how many spaces?
Bring it up, what do you think? Two.
Two portages?
One and a half.
Okay. They're showing three, that's why I'm asking.
All right. They're showing more than they need.
Yeah, maybe they're saying three bedrooms.
They're showing more spaces than they need.
John?
Yes.
You could raise this ugly house, and it'd still be ugly, and we couldn't stop it. And the side yards wouldn't be any different?
The side yards would be allowed to remain as they are. Correct.
You do have to, there is no curb cut now for the house, so you have to put a curb cut in for it.
That's correct.
Correct. Then we know we need county approvals for that.
What I see here is that where the curb cut is going to go, you, on your drawings, you saw it closer, say, going to the long foot side of the building. The building on the right is a, the egress for the cars that park in that commercial building, all egress down the one side there. My question is, in terms of, John, in terms of cars egressing there, if there's a car sitting in the driveway, you know, on the left-hand side, it's going to be better than it would be on the right-hand side, is that correct?
You're saying, you're talking about the exit for Horizon Eye Care?
Yeah, exactly.
This location, in my opinion, is better than if it were, than if it were flipped, yes, if that's what you're asking me, yes.
Just ask that question.
Yes.
What was your question, Clem?
Architectural plans apparently prepared by an engineer, which is illegal.
No, they were not, Clem. We did not prepare those plans. We were asked to create an exhibit to bring to the hearing this evening. These plans were prepared by the people, by the information that's in the title block that's on these plans. In order to just identify what the exhibit is, Clem, it's not a signed and sealed drawing. I didn't, I don't pretend to be an architect, never wanted to be an architect, and these are not my plans.
Those plans can be submitted. They can be submitted and make it a condition of approval.
You can see the title block of the plans on my...
But there is a title block from the preparer?
Yeah, you can see, I mean, there's the title.
Well, I can't see that, that's the problem.
All we did was scan them and put them on a board so that I could have them at the hearing. That's all we did.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions from the board? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment? Public portion is closed. Any further discussion from the board? Leo, would you read the resolution?
Sure. Mr. Rand, you're okay with everything in Mr. McLornin's report?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And it's a waiver of submission of a checklist, so I'll include that in the motion. But we need a motion. Let me back up. This is a Use variance, so seven votes, five in the affirmative is required. So we need a motion to grant a D variance for use to permit this standalone, single-family dwelling, which will include residential on the first floor, which isn't permitted in the C2 zone, together with C variance relief for side yard setbacks on the right side to the building, the front decks, and the rear decks, side yard setbacks on the left side to the building and the front decks, and those are all for 3.5 feet, where five feet is required, and a combined yard setback of seven feet or 10 feet is required. There's a waiver for the submission of the checklist, and the conditions will be, he'll submit a full set of the architectural plans, and all conditions contained in Mr. McLornin's report of April 26, 2018.
I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mike, Remy.
Clem Moszaski?
This is an incomplete application. We were never presented with plans for the building, and yet we're being asked to vote on an entire project who includes not only John's site plan development, but plans for some kind of building that they seem to want to keep a secret from us. We've been through this before, and I'm just not voting on it.
You're abstaining?
No, I'm not abstaining.
You're voting no?
I'll change it, I'm voting no.
Thank you. Rich Patterson?
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
I have no objection to carrying this for another, for the next meeting, to carry, to present the architectural plans, submit them ahead of time, so the board can look at that. I don't want my client to be hurt over, over that, which was clearly an oversight, but no reason to hold anything back from the board, merely that. So with your, with your permission...
Motion's been called and seconded. He's now asking to carry it. The board has some discretion there. There should be some discussion, and we should vote on whether we want to carry it and grant his request.
Let's carry it.
I have no problem with that. I would really like to see the plans before I vote on it.
Someone should make a motion that they'd like to see...
Remy?
Second.
Mike? All in favor? Do we need, all right. Motion passes, it will be carried.
And there'll be no requirement for additional notices?
The applicant will not be required to republish a renotice. If, this application will be carried to next month's meeting, which is May...
24th.
24th, 6:30 PM, in this room. This is your notice for that, and you should have your revised plans in 10 days prior to that date.
We will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hang on to the board members, hang on to the plans that you do have, and we'll get additional... The packet, the packet. Or do you want it back? We can hang on to it, right?
Please hang on to it.
Hang on to the packet, and we'll have additions to it before the next meeting. Next case is Marjorie... Pardon me? No, you're back.
Missed me?
Yeah. Stanek, I'm sorry. Next case is Marjorie Stanek, 8505 Winchester Avenue, block 313.01, lot 24, in the S30 district, to grant C variances for side yard setback, combined side yard setback, front yard setback, building coverage, curb cut, and possibly others. Taxes and order are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLornin?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. My report is in reference to the application of Marjorie Stanek and Rachel Cohen, care of the trustees of the Robert Stanek Marital Trust, 8505 Winchester Avenue. FEMA zone elevation eight, require first floor is elevation 12, according to our new flood damage prevention ordinance. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to elevate and renovate an existing non-flood compliant residential structure with several new variances and expansion of existing nonconforming conditions. The existing nonconforming curb cut is to remain as proposed. The property is on the south corner of Winchester Avenue and Lancaster Avenue. Page two shows the documents reviewed, as well as the zoning charts. Variance is required on page three are as follows. Front yard setback to the building for Winchester Avenue, whereas 12.8 feet is a required minimum setback based on prevailing setbacks, and 9.3 feet is existing and proposed. This is an expansion of a nonconforming setback. Setback, side yard setback to the building from Lancaster Avenue, this is a corner property, so there's two fronts and two sides, whereas five feet is required minimum, 3.6 feet exist and 3.6 feet is proposed. Again, this is an expansion of a nonconforming setback. Third variance required is a combined side yard setback, whereas 22 feet, using the widest width, is a required minimum. 29.6 feet exist and 17 feet is proposed. The last variance identified is building coverage, whereas 35.65 percent is a maximum permitted, 31.2 feet exists, percent exists excluding the detached garage, and 39.3 feet percent is proposed, including the attached to garage. Margate's zoning ordinance does not count detached garages as building coverage, but as soon as those garages touch the building, it becomes part of the building. That's why the increase of coverage. My comment is as follows. The front yard setback along Winchester does not currently meet the required prevailing setback and will not meet as proposed, requires a variance. The side yard setback in Lancaster Avenue is, as discussed previously, as was the combined side yard setbacks. The principal building coverage requires a variance due to the garage now being attached to the principal structure. The landscape coverage actually increases without increasing the size of the buildings. Due to the revised flood damage prevention ordinance, the first floor is required to be set at elevation 12 NAVD 88. It appears that the required number of shrubs is being met. The existing driveway location and width remains and does not require a variance, as they are not expanding it. The limit and extent of improvements within the public driveway is not clearly shown. Again, that can be a condition of approval. They have to meet the C2 criteria for this application, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. I'm Stephen Abramoff on behalf of the applicant, the owner of 8505 Winchester Avenue. Roger has just set out basically a very good summary of what our application is and the variances and relief that we're seeking. A couple of nice features is we have a complete renovation of an existing structure. We are decreasing the impervious ground, which is good. We're increasing... decreasing the impervious ground, which is good, we're increasing the functional parking spaces, off-street parking, and, and some other things to improve an existing structure, modernize it, make it a far more appealing property for its location, or improvement for its location. I would ask if the, if, Mr. Mannus, if you could swear in, our professional tonight, Jerry Blackman, from OSK Design Partners, and he's going to provide the, take you through the project.
Sure. Mr. Blackman, just state your name and business address, and I'll swear you in.
Name is actually Gerald, G-E-R-A-L-D, Blackman, Jr. Address is 17 West Knight Avenue, Collingswood, New Jersey, 08108.
Do you swear affirm this testimony about the, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Blackman, can you please tell the board, give the board a brief summary of your professional background?
Registered architect in the state of New Jersey, a professional planner in the state of New Jersey, both licenses are in, currently in good standing. I've been practicing architecture since 1991, as a registered architect since 2005. I have a degree in architecture from Drexel University, a second degree in architecture from Temple University. I've testified before other nearby municipalities, Atlantic City, Longport, Cape May, Wildwood, Stone Harbor, Avalon.
And you have a background as a planner also, is that correct?
I do, yes. I have presented applications before boards such as yours as a professional planner as well.
Will the board accept Mr. Blackman's credentials to testify as a professional? Thank you.
Did you work on the, did you work on the Martinique?
I did, yes. That was before the Wildwood planning worked for you, yes.
Years ago.
Yes, many moons ago.
Mr. Blackman, if you could take the board through this project, thank you.
I, I will be brief. The, the project is proposed at the corner, I believe it's the southwest corner of Winchester and Lancaster avenues. The project site is 3,870 square feet, so it does exceed the minimum lot requirement of 1,000 square feet. Currently, on the site, there is an existing residence. The residence is one and a half to two stories. The second story is contained within the, the roof of the structure. There's also a detached garage on the property. In addition to that, there is a paved area between the garage and, and Winchester, which is utilized for surface parking. There's walks and, and other improvements on the property as well. The existing residence has four bedrooms. Existing parking on site is, consists of one parking space within the garage. There are two spaces that are between the garage and, and Winchester, but due to the location and size of the existing detached garage, they're actually not compliant parking spaces, they don't meet the minimum requirement. Car actually overhangs the property line over to the public sidewalk, if you were to park cars in front of the garage. Excuse me. The current residence is, the first floor is located at 9.8 feet, so it is actually below the, the, the required height for, due to the flood prevention ordinance. The proposed project is retaining the existing house. We are going to elevate it by raising the house, constructing a foundation that's taller underneath, no basement underneath or parking below that. We're only raising it enough to comply with the, the flood hazard zone requirements, and it'll just be a crawl space underneath. The existing roof of the structure will be removed. Main part of the application is to actually build a fuller or larger area second floor. Although we are building a larger area second floor than what currently exists, and also elevating the structure, we're still well below the, the maximum permitted building height for the zoning district. I think all total will end up about 3 feet below the maximum permitted building height. The, as you heard during the presentation before I began to speak, the, the detached garage will be demolished, and we're actually proposing to attach a garage to the house. Within the garage footprint, we also are proposing a laundry, the laundry will be elevated up to the, the first floor of the residence, and it won't be down at the garage level. And oddly enough, with what we're proposing for building coverage is virtually the same, it's actually 2 square feet less than if you considered the existing residence plus the detached garage together. So we're virtually the same building coverage if Margate did actually include detached garage as part of building coverage. The ordinance does not indicate it that way, but oddly enough, we are roughly the same square footage with what we're proposing as to what's on site now. We, we believe the, the application has, has a lot of merits. As part of the application, we are proposing quite a bit of landscaping, we're removing a significant num, area of impervious coverage, currently it's concrete. Will be in accordance with the Margate landscaping ordinances, and we also are proposing to take an area of concrete that's between the curb line and the public sidewalk that's to be used as a governor's strip. We'll be putting back grass, street trees, something in keeping more with what you see to the existing property that's just to the south of, of the subject property. You'll see the similar governor's strip, similar street trees, similar level of landscaping around the residence. We are taking the existing masonry porch that's on the front of the house facing Winchester, which currently does not conform to the, the porch setback requirements for a front yard. We'll be constructing a compliant front porch, which we think is also more attractive than what currently exists. The existing structure, excuse me, we feel we're going to be improving the, the aesthetics of the structure over and above what, what you see there on site today. We are also proposing some new paper walks and, and patios at grade as well. The, when all done, the, the existing, the structure will have four bedrooms, as it does today. We'll be providing three parking spaces on site, all of which are compliant, one of them in the garage, two of them surface on the, on a driveway between the garage and Winchester. We're using the existing curb cut, we're not modifying that in, in any way. As presented in our application, we are asking for some, some variances. The variances include existing curb cut, although it's an existing non-conforming condition. We're also proposed to, I guess, extend the non-compliant side yard and front yard setbacks. The existing structure does not comply with those setback requirements currently. We're not making it any worse, except we are constructing the wall taller, you know, as part of the second floor expansion that's proposed on the plans, but they get no closer to the property line than what they are today. And total side yard setback, whereas it appears that 22 feet is required in the application that we presented, we indicated 17 feet, but we calculated that based on 37% of the 45-foot dimension of the lot, not the 86-foot dimension. If we utilize the 37, or 37% of the 86-foot dimension, we're actually required a total side yard setback of, of 22 feet. We're proposing 17. So while we do have an existing non-conforming condition for side yard setback, the existing total side yard setbacks comply, but that's really because there's no measurement to a detached garage in the same way as you would a principal building. But be that as it may, the way the application's presented, we do need a total side yard setback. I feel like I'm going a little fast, you know, feel free to stop me if there's any questions.
I have a question on the, on the lower right-hand picture. Are your roof pitches all within 512 or more, 512 or more?
Yes, the, the ones that are shallowest, which are here and here, are 5 and 12, and everything else is steeper than that.
And the picture up on the, the right up top, that's the same, 512 there.
Right here?
Yes.
Yes, that would be 512, and then everything else is steeper than that. That's correct. In, in support of the variances that we are requesting, the, while we do need a variance for, for building coverage, we're, we're actually increasing the open landscaped area on the lot, and, and really the only reason that we feel we need the building coverage variance is because we're taking the garage and attaching it to the building, whereas now it's a detached garage. And even with the, even with the garage detached, the building coverage, oh yes, the building coverage does conform now. Okay, I was going to say that did not conform now, but I was wrong in that, in that regard. I don't want to make a misstatement. The, the parking will be increasing from one parking space on site, which is non-compliant, to three, which would comply with your ordinance for the number of bedrooms that we're proposing for the project. The floor elevation of 9.8, which is non-conforming currently, we will elevate and conform to the Margate flood prevention ordinance. We are maintaining an existing 9.3 foot front yard setback, whereas when we do calculate the prevailing setbacks along Lancaster, or not, along Lancaster, 12.8 feet is the prevailing setback, so we, we would need a variance for that. The side yard setback, we are maintaining an existing 3.6 feet, whereas at least 5 feet is required, and the total side yard, we are actually decreasing the side yard setback, whereas 17 feet is proposed and 22 feet is, is required. While we will comply with the building height requirement, and then we're proposing a height of 24 feet, whereas 28 feet is permitted, we're proposing two stories where 2.5 stories is permitted, and we are proposing to add street trees and a governor's strip where none exists today.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Blackman, sorry.
Would you just repeat one fact that you gave for us?
Sure.
It was, I didn't want to interrupt you, but essentially regarding the building coverage and regarding the detached garage.
Okay.
Do you know the numbers specifically?
Yeah, I do.
Or what, what does the garage add? The coverage that the garage itself is, do we know that number?
We do, yes. The total that we are proposing on the first floor is 1,503 square feet. Now, that is comprised of 1,235 square feet of residence and 268 square feet for the The second floor is 1,284 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the existing, if we were to calculate the structure plus the garage, the detached garage together, the total is?
1505.
1,505 square feet, yes.
The only glitch in the argument of attaching the garage to the house and saying you're not increasing the square footage is you can't put a second floor in a detached garage, so you are getting the benefit of the extra bedroom up there. I'm not objecting to it, but, but there is a, there is more to it than just the fact that you're putting the two together. You're getting extra, a lot of, a good-sized bedroom up there.
That is true, yes, we are proposing a bedroom on the second floor above the garage.
Jerry?
Yes.
You're showing shingle siding.
Thank you, Remy.
Any chance they're going to be real shingles or they're going to be plastic?
They won't be plastic, we're proposing hardy siding, fiber cement.
Fiber cement?
Fiber cement shingles, yes, but not, not vinyl.
Anything else from the board? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this case? Public portion is closed.
All right. Mr. Abramoff, you're okay with everything in Mr. McLaren's report?
Yes.
Conditions?
No other comments from the board?
All right. We need a motion for C variance relief for a front yard setback to the building along Winchester Avenue of 9.3 feet or 12.8 feet is required, side yard setback to the building along Lancaster Avenue of 3.6 feet or 5 feet is required, a combined side yard setback of 17 feet where 22 feet is required, building coverage variance of 39.3%, and that, that includes the attached garage where 35.65% is the permitted maximum. Conditions will be all those, any, any conditions contained in Mr. McLaren's report of April 26, 2018, and which includes, but is not limited to, that comment number eight showing the limit and extent of improvements within the public right of way.
I'll make the motion, but isn't it combined two on there? Is it combined setback?
Combined setback, yeah, I said that. 17 feet where 22 feet is required.
Let me write it down. A second?
I, I make the motion.
A second. Clem Moesaski.
I like this project. I lived on North Lancaster Avenue for 42 years, and the building that's there was always considered a neighborhood eyesore. Nobody's going to miss it. This is a nice, clean design, it's not loaded with all that superfluous architectural applicability we see so much of. This really fits into Margate. It's a vast, vast improvement, I certainly vote in favor.
Rich Patterson?
Well, I'm not allowed to hold it against Mr. Blackman that he helped me go bankrupt, but I, I agree with everything Clem said. I think this is a beautiful addition. It, it, it really, it's as much an improvement as the house across the street was, when that house was upgraded that you referred to with the wraparound porch. I, I don't see any detriments to anyone here, I would think the neighborhood would be thrilled. I vote to approve it.
Mike Cristaldi?
I didn't have anything to do with his bankruptcy either, but I think he did a great job on the architecture of it, and I think it fits the neighborhood. I definitely approve.
Jim Gallantino?
This is the original jitney garage.
Yes.
This was enlarged to fit a jitney in because you couldn't keep the jitney parked outside, so apparently somebody in that family had a jitney for years.
Mr. Gray.
And I don't know if anybody knew that, but that was the ugliest garage in Margate.
And the jitney was always parked outside of the garage.
And the jitney was always parked outside. So for that reason alone, I don't see a problem. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalti?
I agree with the other board members, it's a really nice design, we're getting rid of that existing eyesore. I like that there's, we're creating more landscaping, we didn't use the height that we had to at 28 or 24, and I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Pomisano?
Yeah, I agree with the other board members, you're raising the home, it's a corner property, so that makes things tough for you. You're giving us more area around the property to the neighbors, to the neighbor's side by moving the garage in, I like that. And the wraparound porch is wonderful, I approve it.
Mike Richman?
Yeah, it's a definite improvement to the neighborhood, it's adding parking, it's raising the house, and it's a beautiful-looking rendering, so I approve it.
Application passes, seven to nothing.
Thank you.
Steve, will you please step aside?
You're a cruiser, okay. We're going to take a five-minute break. All right, the meeting is back in session. Please turn your mic on, Mr. Westleski. Before the next case, I want to make an announcement. The next meeting had been publicly advertised earlier in the year as May 31st, it is actually on May 24th. And one reminder to the board to please keep the plans for Stacy Koppinger, like as I said before, you'll get the balance of them at a later date.
The other announcement is that financial disclosure forms are due Monday.
Does anybody not have it in?
A lot of you.
Next case is Brian Dana Hiltner, 428 North Pembroke Avenue, Block 617, Lots 36, in the S40 District, to grant C variances for front yard setback to the building, building coverage, and possibly others.
and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. My report is based for the application of Brian and Dana Hiltner, 428 North Pembroke Avenue. Flood zone elevation nine, so the first floor is required to be at 13 as per our new ordinance. This is a substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling within the S-40 zoning district. The variance requires us to construct a porch in the building closer to the right-of-way based on the prevailing setback requires. A front yard landscaping requirement variance is required as well. The building is required to have a first-floor elevation of 13 versus 11 due to the recent flood damage prevention ordinance revisions, as I just mentioned. Page one and two is the zoning chart. Discuss the variances required as follows. Front yard setback variance for the porch, whereas the prevailing setback is 14.95 feet and eight feet is proposed. Front yard setback for the building, whereas the prevailing setback is 18.9 feet, 95 feet, and 16.9 feet is proposed. Front yard landscaping coverage, whereas 60 percent or up to 50 percent with steps is a minimum permitted and 50.1 percent is proposed. Should be around 55 percent based on the calculations.
It should be 55 instead of 60?
Yes, it would be permitted. The area the steps provides about 55 percent. Minor change. I mentioned that that's comment number three. Comment number four is reduction in the front yard setback will skew the average for future development, as is normally the case. Comment number five, the front yard setback reported on the plans is reversed but correctly shown in the zoning chart. All-site runoff is to be directed towards the street and not onto any neighbor. The rest are standard comments, which the applicant shall either agree on or not. And they have, again, this is a C.2 variance, where it's a substantial benefit, so they have to provide testimony in regard to that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, my name is Chris Ballinson. I represent Brian and Dana Hiltner, who are here with us this evening for their property at 428 North Pembroke Avenue, block 617, lot 36. Property is currently approved with the Hartmanns, the Hiltners, a single-family home. What is proposed, as their family gets larger, they just had their first child, it is proposed to demolish the existing one-and-a-half-story rancher cape on the property and build a new home consistent with the plans that most of you have received. The lot measures 55 across the front. It's 80 feet deep. What is proposed this evening with that single-family home are three variances. The variances that are set forth on the plan show a front yard setback to the porch of eight feet versus 14.95 feet required, about 15 feet required, so it's a seven-foot deviation for the porch. And for the house, which is a required 19-foot front yard setback, we're showing 17 feet or a two-foot deviation to the house. So it's two-foot deviation to the principal structure, a seven-foot deviation to the porch. The front yard setback to the porch, that screws up, for lack of a better word, right now, the front yard landscaping, which is about 5 percent off. In preparing for the case, we reached out, the Hartmanns and the Hiltners reached out to all the neighbors. All the neighbors are fully in support of the project. There is one neighbor, Mark Nashstein, and his wife Janet, to the west, I'm sorry, to the north, who are not in agreement with the plan and have asked that certain concessions be made. It was agreed this evening, finally, that certain concessions would be made. The adjustments to the plan are as follows. The building setback will conform. Okay, yes. Building setback, the way it's done is going to be a combination of reduction in porches, decks, and house size, but the house will conform. The setback to the deck, instead of being seven feet, I'm sorry, instead of being eight feet, will be 11 feet, picking up three feet. So you have a setback of 11 feet to the front porch. The house conforms. That actually brings the front yard landscaping to 55 percent, which according to Roger's calculation, with the credit for the steps, conforms, eliminates two variances. We have one variance for the porch, for a deviation as between 14.95 and 11, so four-foot deviation. As everybody read in the narrative that I provided, the Hiltners are going to be here year-round. They're going to raise their kids here, and what they have found, and what the neighbors will tell you, is that it's a great street because it's kind of a pseudo-dead end. It's a great street like the old days to let the kids play out front, which is really ideal. That's the way you develop neighborhoods. That's the way you create friendships with neighbors, hang out on the front porch, let the kids play outside through, you know, through dusk. It's just, it's a, it's a good way to grow up. And by allowing a larger front porch, in this case, a front porch that's going to be about eight feet, it gives you some space to hang out. It gives you some space for some chairs and a table, and to have a house that's, a house the size of a family, that a family can grow up in.
Where's the existing porch? Is that it back or is that further?
The existing porch, actually, the proposed porch is going to be further back than the existing porch. The existing porch is at the eight that we had proposed. We were going to, we were going to keep it there, but there were some, there were some concerns about that from the neighbor to the right, so we've adjusted that three feet.
So it'll be back three feet from what's existing now?
Exactly right.
Okay.
To hope to appease those guys, and they, unfortunately, couldn't come to an agreement. That's the prelude. Tom can tell you about the house a little bit more specifically, if you would, Tom?
Regarding where we're going to cut out?
No, regarding the project, what's proposed. Tell them about the house, how nice it's going to be, things of that nature.
Just state your name and business address, I'll swear in.
In the microphone?
In the microphone.
Tom Baglevo. Baglevo says she gets 301 East Termentown Pike, East Arton PA 1941.
And you swear affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thanks.
Tom, you're a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you prepared the plans that are submitted to the board for their consideration?
Yes.
If you would, tell us what the Hiltners asked of you when they came to you to design a house, and what it is you've come up with.
A great house.
Of course.
Is what they wanted, number one. Just very family-oriented, like you said, they've lived in...
Tell these guys.
Lived in Margate their entire life, liked sitting out on the front porch, she was going on out front, a nice, comfortable yard. They do a lot of eating outside, barbecuing.
Is this a new house to them or have they lived there?
No, I'm sorry, they're, they're currently, let me start over. They currently have a small one-and-a-half-story that Chris explained earlier. We're going to take down...
But they live there?
They live there now.
All right. How long have they lived there?
You lived there six?
Five years.
I was close. Five years.
Five years.
And they both lived in Margate prior to that, and we're going to take that down because it's an older home, and we're coming up to standards, the way homes are used today. So as I said, the front yard, the backyard, they're doing a lot of eating, a lot of entertaining at the pool with family members that are all in the area as well. And we, first floor, it's fairly typical, a study in the front living room off of the front porch. The kitchen would open right out to the covered porch and into the pool. And then the buffer on the beach side would be the driveway and the garage. And we've got all the equipment as, you know, per code above. A master, two bedrooms. In addition to the master on the second floor, the third floor would be two smaller bedrooms and a bathroom, and a stair on the driveway side. And very similar to the cottage feel that's there now, we would have corbels and, you know, vertical fiber cement board. The whole house would basically be fiber board, hardy board, and we just brought in some typical, you know, beach house elements.
The exterior treatment is not, not the plastic material. It's going to be...
Yeah, it's hardy, yeah, fiber cement, hardy board.
With respect to the zoning controls and compliance, the remainder of the home, aside from what I've said with respect to landscaping and front yard setback, complies, does it not?
Correct.
In fact, the house right now, on the right side, has a setback of 2.9 feet. Is that right? Approximately, okay.
Yes. Oh, current, our current...
Currently, right.
Yeah, 2.9 feet.
And that's, and that's going to be, that's going to be increased to eight feet, which is a conforming setback?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and the setback on the left side, where the driveway is, is a little 12 feet plus, is that right?
Oh, feet four.
Okay, and the combined side yard setbacks then are in conformance with the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Rear yard setback meets the requirement at 16 feet?
Yes.
Okay, and the third floor, which is allowed to be 50 percent, and the second floor is actually about 10 percent less, it's about 40 percent of the second floor, about 50 percent?
Yes.
Okay, and height obviously conforms with the ordinance as well?
Exactly.
Okay, in terms of justification of these variances, Tom, when we look at building a new home, especially with the flood hazard ordinance amendments that we've now have dealt with, the new recent amendments that have just been made, do you find the positive criteria under the Land Use Act is met by taking a house down that doesn't conform with the flood hazard ordinance and building one that does?
Yes.
And what about bringing a house into compliance, a new home, which will be in compliance with all new codes, building codes, construction codes, regulations, and standards?
Yes.
That also meets the purposes of the Act?
Absolutely.
When we talk about the general welfare, promoting the general welfare and the development of neighborhoods and the development of the community feel, which has been found to be a benefit under the Land Use Act, could you explain to us why this proposal in keeping a family in the neighborhood advances that purpose?
What do you, it advances the purpose just for the actual use of the house and how the house is being used, but as other homes do the same thing, we're promoting more full-time residents overall.
By, by, obviously, building a new house here for the Hiltners, it allows them and gives them the space that they need to raise their family.
Raise their, yeah.
In terms of the negative criteria and whether or not the variance is that we're asking for, and in fact, it's now a single variance for front yard setback of 11 to the porch versus 14.95, do you think that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good? And if so, why?
I agree, because the current home is 2.9 feet from the setback on the side yard. The current porch is three feet closer to the street, so if anything, we're bringing the elements further from the street. And if we elected to raise the current house, we could leave the 2.9 feet where it is and go up at least three feet currently, which would create more shadows than what we're proposing in this.
And how about, do you then see any substantial detriment by allowing these variances to be granted? Substantial detriment to the public good?
No, not at all.
Or to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance?
No, not at all.
Okay. That's all the direct testimony I have, the Hiltners are here. If anybody has any questions on that, or neighbors, neighbors, people who have an interest in the project, if you'd like to speak.
Mr. Baglevo. Where do you pick up the two feet from the building?
We're going, we are, haven't figured it out yet, but I can tell you in theory where it is. The porch, front porch, we'll go back, three feet that we discussed. We would take one foot out of the living room and study. We would take six inches out of the kitchen, and we would take another six inches off the covered porch. So that would give us a foot here, a foot here, and a foot off.
So you're not moving the building, you're making the building smaller?
Both. Because by making the building smaller and taking the six from here, I have to move everything...
No, I mean, you're moving just the front back end, making the building smaller. You're not moving the building into the backyard?
Correct.
Correct. You're moving the back wall end and the front wall end.
Yeah, we're moving the back wall back, right. The back wall only goes back six inches, but it still isn't anywhere near the 16 feet. So six here and the remaining two and a half in the front, but six, six, one and one.
We wanted to make a reasonable effort in light of the neighbors' concerns, and we thought we have, especially by eliminating two of the variances, bringing down the single variance. Hopefully, the board can find, find its way to see that positively.
If the, if the deck was conforming, how wide would it be? How wide would the deck be if it was conforming?
Three more feet, might be five feet.
It's actually less than that.
Less, sorry.
Eight, three, five, it would be...
Four feet.
Four or less, yeah. So it really wouldn't be a deck at four feet.
I mean, there are, there are those spaces in town where you come up with a setback of 20 feet or 15 feet. That's aggressive. I mean, I know it skews the setback average, but where some places are allowed five, and I know we had a hiccup around the corner, which we didn't want to repeat, and it caused a lot of problems, and that's why we thought a setback of 11 feet to a porch rather than any closer would really work. Thanks.
Anything else from the board?
I have a comment. Is there an outside shower proposed, so we don't...
Yes.
...find it right before we inspect it?
There's an outside shower proposed.
Where, where?
It's not on there yet, as I've heard.
Okay. Gotcha.
There will be an outside shower proposed on the final drawings.
Do you know where it will be?
Probably here or, yeah, probably here by the back of the garage.
You also, you also wanted to comment...
Three-foot setback to the exterior.
Bring it off the back, yeah, exactly.
With drainage.
Yeah, we have a drainage detail with stone and everything.
And also something for the Hiltners to consider, maybe moving that pull equipment from that deck into the garage. Just think, if they're sitting on that back deck and they're listening to that pull equipment, they might...
Well, we've allowed it inside garages.
Yes.
As long as you still have the parking spot.
Correct. I'm just making a suggestion as an honor requirement.
And the garage serves as a sound attenuating structure?
Yes. Does that require a variance? No, it doesn't, no. I'm just looking ahead. Last minute change, we just want to avoid those.
For the shower.
Roger said that.
Okay, thanks.
One's got a question.
Drainage from the garage roof, you've got the wall three inches off the line.
Right, we do a zero clearance, oh, I'm sorry, you have a question.
But then you say the total overhang, I see six inches. That would put you three inches over the line.
What we do is we do a zero clearance, solid, and just put gutter on the side of the garage. So if the edge of the gutter still is, I think it's... We just did that on a couple...
You can do all...
Doesn't have quite the detail.
You can do all that with three inches?
Yeah, well, it doesn't show that way on the elevation. I elevated the garage.
Tom, I think what Mr. Wazlaski is suggesting to you, that make sure that the gutters on the garage don't encroach onto the neighbors' property.
Right.
It says you're going into a perimeter drain. Where does the drain tip?
The perimeter drain is potentially a typo from Vettner, because they're making us put perimeter drains.
They are?
Yeah.
Where are the drains at?
The street. I don't understand it, but they're asking for it. So that's just, that's, I'll take care of it.
Where'd it work without a pump?
Right.
Last question I got, Chris and Tom, is the generator. You guys want a generator?
Where's that going to be?
Get the shoehorn out, I don't know.
You want a generator?
Put it in the pool.
Do they have to be at my front?
Put it on the roof of the garage.
With all the other stuff? Right side. They're going to shut the gas off there. AC unit.
One at a time.
AC unit?
It's on the side.
Is there a question?
The AC unit.
Well, Mr. Pomisano's talking, Mr. Crisaldi's talking.
AC unit's right over here.
Yeah, AC unit's on the side of the building.
Only a set, five-foot setback. Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's good.
And the building's eight feet off, yeah, so we have delta.
So there's going to be one compressor out there?
They'll probably be stacked. So we'll...
Okay. Are these board concerns or are these building concerns?
I think there's two zones. We haven't figured that out yet, but probably two zones. There will be two zones, and there'll be two stack compressors, condensers right on that back corner over, beyond five feet from the property line.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone from the public like to speak?
It's your name and address, and I'll swear in.
Mark Nashtein, 430 North Pembroke.
Can you spell your last name?
I'm sorry. N-A-I-S-H-T-E-I-N.
You swear affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
We obviously live at 430 North Pembroke. We are the neighbor on the right side of the, of the applicants, and we have some concerns about the front porch setback, and I'd like to have John Bornhart say a few words on our behalf.
John, will you swear you in real quick again, do you swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
That's John Barnhart for the record.
Okay, so Mark called me a few days ago with regard to this project, and they've lived in the house next door, immediately to the right of this site, for, I think, 18 years or so.
18 years, yes.
And they had some real concerns with regard to the front yard setback, so we took a look at it for Mark, and there's a couple of things going on here, and they are trying to work with the neighbor to make it as, you know, as neighborly as possible, but what we looked at from Mark is that their house, and the setback survey shows that their house sits, and their porch both sit at about 20 feet back, and this porch, as it was proposed, was eight, and we're, you know, they're very thankful that they moved it to the 11-foot front yard setback, but that 11-foot front yard setback is still a foot further than even the minimum within the 200-foot setback, so what you're looking at is, from a practical standpoint, is you're looking at approving a porch that is, at a minimum, 12 inches further out than the closest porch within that 200-foot setback right now, so it will skew that 200-foot setback average in the future. From a planning perspective, I think we can all recognize that we have a very consistent existing front porch setback, if you look at the average setbacks, they, they're very consistent, this is a very consistent block, that starts at a minimum of 12 and then rises as you go, Mark and Janet are just concerned that this is creating an inconsistency on this property, and that with regard to, from a planning perspective, obviously this is not a hardship situation, and arguably, it would be, I think it's difficult to establish this as I see two type of variances, because with Mark being the neighboring property owner, to prove that the benefits of this deviation outweigh the detriments, I think is pretty difficult for the applicant, but having said all of that, they are, they do understand, they don't want, they want to have them build a brand-new, beautiful home, they do want to have them, allow them to have the, you know, the amenities that they're trying to accomplish in their rear yard, which, from my perspective, is what is forcing the house forward because of the pool and the depth they're looking for in the rear yard, all they're asking for at this point is for the front porch to be setback equal to what the current minimum setback is of the porch, so they're just asking for the front porch to be at 12 feet versus the 11 feet that they're currently proposing.
Can I ask a question, is the backyard bigger than it was before? Will the backyard be bigger than, Chris? You're not sworn in, you can't talk.
Backyard is certainly not bigger than it is right now, it meets the minimum setback of 16 feet.
I just, I'm asking, is it bigger than what it was?
It is not.
Okay.
Is the, is the existing porch, isn't it out further than what the new porch would be? Is the new porch back, gonna be back further?
It will be, but.
So the existing one, if they didn't do anything, would be like it is now, which wouldn't be any better than it is, it's gonna be better if they go back with the new one.
But I think to Mark.
The existing porch is much narrower.
The one that is there now, yep.
And it's also, the new, these new decks will be, I think we figured, four to five feet higher as well.
The existing porch is much narrower, but much closer to the street.
Much farther away from us.
So all that Mark and Janet are looking for. All that Mark and Janet are looking for is for them to at least meet the minimum that's currently on the block, which is the 12 feet, they're currently at 11, you know, realistically speaking, you could design this property 100 ways to not need these front yard variances, so.
Well, wait, is the, is the width of the porch creating a variance, is that, I'm confused?
The width, no, it's the front, it's the front setback of the porch that's still the variance, they have offered, they have modified their application to go to an 11-foot setback.
Right, but the neighbor just was talking about the porch is wider, which is creating the problem, I was just clarifying.
No, the existing porch is on the other side of their house with respect to us.
Right.
It's not the full width of their house.
Right.
Their new porch is the full width of their house.
But that doesn't create a variance, right?
No.
Okay, all right, I'm just, thick.
So you're saying that the, with the first revision, the porch would be eight feet, so now if they move back, yeah, so then it would be still a seven-foot long porch?
They're, well, they're proposing to, I guess, slide the building back a little bit as well, too, because they've gotten rid of that front yards, there was a front yard setback to the building wall variance as well. Correct, right, so they slid that back, so the, with his modifications, I'm not sure at this point how deep the porch would be, but what Mark is, was hoping for is for them to meet the minimum, be at 12 feet, and there's a number of ways that can be accomplished here, I mean, if you look at the rear yard, there's a lot going on back there, there are, there are many ways that they could accomplish that additional 12 inches.
Well, they, okay, go ahead.
John.
You can, you can respond when they're done, or do you want, do you, any question on that? Yeah, go ahead.
While we're waiting on that, is this the same neighbor that, did you previously agree to, or not agree, but did you feel comfortable with the 11, and given all the concessions regarding the building moving back two feet and the porch moving back three feet, are you now not as comfortable?
We wanted.
Are we speaking of the same neighbor that had concerns?
That's me.
Okay.
That's Mark, and Mark and Janet, Mark and Janet were really hoping, were really hoping that the front porch would actually be at 13 feet, which would put it right in the range of the existing houses, but they.
Well, that would be a six-foot deck.
Right.
You just can't use it.
They can live, well, yeah, but Rich, I mean, look at the plan, there's a lot of ways that they could make that deck bigger.
Would you like an eight-foot deck?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
There's a lot of ways they could make that deck bigger and not lose much out of the house or the deck in the rear, I mean, if you want to, for example, like this projection here, if you modified that and pushed it in, you could move the whole building back, I mean, there's a lot of ways they could accomplish it, that's all Mark's saying, and he's just, because he's 20 feet back, you know, it's, and with this building being five feet higher and the deck being all the way across the front of the building, every inch counts for him now.
Well.
And I was just wondering if there was two neighbors in opposition, I was just trying to clarify that it was the same person we're discussing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's why I asked.
I just looked at the house being raised, and it would be a terrible thing for him, and that could be done, but it would probably cost the same as building a new house, I mean, it would make sense to build, I don't know this, I mean, I'm just, from what I've seen, but it could be raised in its existing footprint, and it would be horrible for you, and this is, just seems to me like it's coming back, and whatever, that's, you're making your point, I.
It's a hard variant, the request is a hard variance to justify from a planning perspective.
Oh, John, I've heard you justify much worse.
All he's asking is, all he's asking is for this porch to be at the minimum, which is still a pretty big deviation for a front yard setback, he's not asking for anything more than that.
Got it.
I think at this point, it's 12 inches, so.
Anything else? Any other members of the public? I'm sorry. Were you done? I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Any questions from the board? Come on.
Six and six, front and back.
They've already gone 36. Yes. Yes.
We still on? Are we all?
We on?
But we're down to the one variance, though.
We're down to one variance, I don't have any additional adjustments to make, I have clients who aren't thrilled with the adjustments that I offered, so I don't have, I'm not gonna tweak those at all, I'm gonna leave it as originally, as proposed when I originally spoke.
Three variances or one variance?
One variance. For the porch.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
Yes, yes, eight to 11.
Okay, we just need a motion for a C variance relief for front yard setback to the porch of 11 feet or 14.95 feet is the prevailing required setback, and the conditions will be anything contained in Mr. Moparn's report of April 19, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Motion?
Make a motion.
Reading, Remy?
I'll second.
Jim?
Clem Wazeski?
The changes that the applicant has agreed to make, exactly the ones I was going to suggest, I think the house can easily give up that two feet without making a noticeable difference in how it functions. The, as an aside, encouraging children play in the front, since they built all the McMansions there along the lagoon, Pembroke Avenue where I live, it's become a raceway, let keep the kids in the back. One of the nice people back there took the side-view mirror off my car a couple summers ago, in a hurry to get down the shore. I'd like to see a little more landscaping done in the front, regardless of the other things that have been talked about, and I think we have to keep in mind that the porch is essentially an open area, it's solid up to its base, the floor, and it's, has construction on top, but it's essentially open as far as a horizontal view is concerned and the air circulation. I think with the changes made, I vote in favor.
Rich Patterson?
I also vote in favor, I see this as, I see another house that could be raised, I've had it next to me where a house was raised with a nonconformance, it creates a mess, I see tremendous improvements to the neighborhood, to the setbacks, they've conceded on all variances except one, I, I think what they've given up here and end up with an eight-foot deck in the front, which is, I think, is a minimum, I think they've conceded a lot, I think the neighbor's being unreasonable to ask for another foot, I think it's gonna benefit his house, he has more light and air around his house, I vote in favor, I think the benefits far outweigh the detriments here.
Mike Crustaldi?
I agree with Mr. Patterson, I think they gave up quite a bit, I have a seven-foot porch and I hate it, it's terrible, you sit in the chair and people trip over your feet trying to get past you, and as Clem said.
You're a big guy, Mike.
Not really. As Clem stated, it's still an open porch, it's open air, it's, you know, you see through, it's not like a wall that's blinding you or making a mess, I think they've given up enough, I vote yes for the project.
Jim Galentina?
When they came to me five years ago and wanted to renovate their building, I said, should raise this house, but I'm glad to see him doing it, and I think it's a home run for the street, it's really gonna improve the street, and I wish him a lot of luck, and I approve the application.
Craig Pomisano?
Well, it is an improvement to the neighborhood, to the street, it's, the porch is gonna be more, it's better than the existing porch that's there, they did take a lot off, they took six inches off the front, a foot off the back, some off the middle of the house, they made concessions, it's a young family in Margate, hopefully with the children coming, or if you have them already, and going to our schools in Margate, and I approve the application.
Despinahess?
I'm also gonna vote in favor of the application, I believe that the applicant satisfied all necessarily elements of the criteria that they were required to prove, I would actually agree 100 percent with everything Mr. Patterson said, I think he hit on everything, it wasn't lost on me about skewing the average, but I believe that the concession of bringing it back three feet, both from the building and from the porch, is a really big concession, I don't even know that I would have given so much, and the building was my biggest concern, and you gave both of those two feet away, and I vote in favor of the application.
Mike Kretschman?
Yeah, we're down to one variance, and moving the house back, I think, is a big improvement, because that's really the mass, I get the skewing of the front setbacks, but each case is, comes sort of born on its own merits, and I really don't see it, well, I don't live next door, but for the overall neighborhood, I do not see a detriment, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing, Chris, please come sign.
We have a closed session of the board.
We need a motion to go into closed session.
All in favor? Aye.
And I have to read, read something.
Motion passes, go ahead.
I just have, at this time, the City of Margate Planning Board would be.
Wait a minute, are we in closed session?
No, we're not, that's, I'm gonna tell us we're going in. At this time, the City of Margate Planning Board will be entering into an executive session not open to the general public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the matters to be discussed are pending litigation entitled Edward Blumenthal versus the City of Margate Planning Board and Adventure Golf South LP, that's pending in the Superior Court of New Jersey, Atlanta County, docket number ATL-609-18, the Planning Board will keep minutes of the executive session as required by law, which will be approved by the Planning Board and made promptly available for public inspection when required and permitted by law, when the executive session is complete, will now, will come back on to, into the public, and any action that needs to be taken will be taken in public session. Come on, John. Oh, we're back on?
You're on.
Okay, we're now out of executive session, we're back in public session, the matter we discussed.
Can we have a motion to exit?
First, we need a motion to.
I'll make that motion, I'll second that motion.
That's the motion to exit executive session and go back to public, okay. Did I, we have a motion in a second?
All in favor?
All in favor?
It was Mike and.
Aye.
He's not here, all right, so we're now back on, in public session, what we discussed in executive session was pending litigation in the Blumenthal versus City of Margate Planning Board versus Adventure Golf case, and a possible resolution of that, of that matter, I have before you now a resolution, it's Resolution 24-2018, I'm gonna read it into the record, and then we'll, someone would like to make a motion in a second, and I'll read it as fast as I can, Resolution 24-2018, Resolution of the City of Margate Planning Board authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and mutual releases with Edward Blumenthal and Adventure Golf South LP, whereas Edward Blumenthal has filed a lawsuit in Superior Court of New Jersey, Atlanta County, against the City of Margate Planning Board and Adventure Golf South LP, entitled Edward Blumenthal versus City of Margate Planning Board and Adventure Golf South LP, docket number ATL-609-18, and whereas the lawsuit involves a challenge at the City of Margate Planning Board's grant of preliminary and final major site plan approval together with certain variance relief pursuant to NJISA 4055D-70C to Adventure Golf South LP in order to construct an 18-hole miniature golf course on property of Margate's Commercial Business District identified as Slide 85 and Block 127 of the Margate City map, which property is located 1312 Vettner Avenue, and whereas the City of Margate Planning Board finds that it is in the best interest of the board to settle this lawsuit and execute the attached settlement agreement and mutual releases of the lawsuit, now therefore be it resolved on this 26th day of April 2018 by the City of Margate Planning Board, County of Atlantic State, New Jersey, as follows, number one, the City of Margate Planning Board hereby authorizes and directs the board chairman to execute the attached settlement agreement and mutual releases, and, along with the board professionals, to take any further action, if any, any further action necessary, if any, to effectuate the terms of the settlement agreement and mutual releases, be it further resolved that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision, this resolution shall be adjudged by the course to be invalid, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision, so adjudicated and the remainder of this resolution shall be deemed valid and effective, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect following adoption and approval and a time and manner prescribed by law. effect following adoption and approval and time and manner prescribed by law, and we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion, I'll second. Roll call.
No, roll call.
No?
So Jim made the motion, and Mike seconded? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Any more business?
I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Meeting adjourned.
I have to sign it, right? Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you three, let me just get organized here, you signed all the other ones yet?
Yes.